Anything for further consideration, they may do so, and if not, the chair will entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded, we approve the consent agenda. If no discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. And to our regular agenda, agenda item number five is a public hearing. Consider the specific use permit allowing a stone, sand, gravel, and mineral extraction in agriculture zoning at 2722 Durst Street. Mr. Manti? Good evening.
Good evening and happy new year to everybody.
You same, do you?
The case before us tonight is a specific use permit to allow for a sand and stone extraction at a property located at 2722 Durst Street, which is about 507 feet from the loop. And I have on the screen here showing the location map for the area. It's about 7.1 acres. Per our city ordinance, to allow for such a use in an agricultural zone, the applicant has to apply for a specific use permit. The specific use permit is a kind of permit where, which allows for a use that the zoning will probably, which the zoning will not have allowed by rights. And so, we took it to PNZ and City Council give the final vote on it tonight. The SUP, unlike the zoning, unlike a rezoning, allows for certain reasonable conditions to be put on site, because basically, it's not been allowed by rights. And so, the key word here is reasonable conditions that would make, that applies to the development. So, it's currently, I have an area map showing the sites. It's zoned agriculture, like I said earlier. It has a residence on it, and I have a cutout showing where the residence are shown on the map. For the future land use map, just a little portion is zoned for commercial, and majority of it is zoned for vacant uses. And I always say the reason behind allowing certain properties to be vacant is to allow the future uses to be determined by the future growth of the city. So, it's currently vacant. In approving an SUP, there are certain factors that our ordinance allows us to look at before we make any recommendation or final vote on an SUP. And I'll quickly go through those factors. The first one is compactability. So, the area is in close proximity to the loop and has mixed uses as along, along the road, if you show me on the aerial, which probably wouldn't show much of it. And the applicant is applying for an industrial use for the stone and sand extraction. Staff believes that having the same type of use next door, and that is what I think I haven't mentioned, that the property next door to, to the west is also a stone and sand extraction. I think it's been there probably before our zoning ordinance came into being. So, staff believes that having the same type of use next door might have an impact on the surrounding land uses. I would say for a fact that nobody has complained about this use ever since I came into the city. And, but I believe that when we're looking at compactability, there's already an existing use to the east, to the, to the east of this property. So, the question here is increasing that kind of use in that area, is this something that will be compacted with the neighborhood? As you drive on Durst Street, you see more of residential uses. As you go further, there's even a retirement home along the street. This use will probably not bring a lot of tracks, not, and other stuff, but there are some, certain factors that we need to look at. So, compactability, there's already an existing use on the east. Increasing the use along Durst Street, staff believes is something of concern that we should be mindful of. We want to look at orderly growth and development. Staff believes that ideally, putting an industrial use in an agricultural zone will not be in line with what we call orderly growth and development, even though we don't have complaints from the existing business to the east. Based on land use, compactability, and orderly growth, staff believes this use would probably not be the best fit for the agricultural zone in that area. Supporting facilities, the site is adequately served with all basic utilities, and the development would, would have driveway and some parking for the use on site. I'll move to nuisances. Staff believes that before approving this development, we need to be mindful of dust, fumes, and noise pollution, which should be considered as an issue of concern. We already have an existing use to the east doing the same thing on site, and so, increasing that kind of use along the street. Staff believes we need to be careful about dust, fumes, and noise pollution during the, I mean, having, like I said, we haven't received any complaint from the use to the, the use that is on the east, but we are actually going to increase that kind of use in the, in the neighborhood. So, we need to be, something that we should be careful about. The lightening, the development does not propose any lighting. Landscaping, the applicant has informed site, and we know there's not going to be any landscape on site, it's going to be a stone and sand extraction. And then, we also have, per the ordinance, we have to look at the use and its conformity to the 2003 comprehensive plan. Over the years, development along Durst Street and inside the loop has been primarily residential, and it's very evident as you drive along the streets. In the desire to harmonize land uses in an area, it is always relevant to consider the predominant use of zoning, and then allocate future uses of zoning that will blend and integrate better. As you drive along the street, it's primarily residence, and so, this use being an industrial, staff believes there's, there's, there's a gap in there from moving from residence to industrial next door. And then, staff did, and last, we did look at the city's comprehensive plan, and the vision, which clearly says that Nogodoches, the oldest town in Texas, appreciates and protects its historical, natural, and cultural character. The city also promotes a healthy living environment and enjoys future growth and prosperity. Putting this use or increasing the use along the street, staff believes that's not fit into the vision of the comprehensive plan when it was being written at the time. And so, staff believes we need to consider the vision of the comprehensive plan before making a decision on that. We don't have any floodplain map, because no part of this property falls within the floodplain area. I have pictures here showing the building on site. The applicant intends to keep the building and have a separate driveway to assess the use. We did send a notification to properties within the 200 feet. Nobody came out to oppose or to request, to recommend approval of it either, so. I have here a map showing, I, this is, I went beyond to look at the impact of these uses in, in certain areas, and what we were able to get from the queries and ancillary activity, which are guideline for planning authorities, is that when you have these uses, the dust can spread all the way, 0.3 miles, and I have a map here showing the, the impact of dust with the existence of this development. Once again, I want to put on record that the existing use to the east of it, we haven't had any issue from any resident, probably the past, but not ever since I came in. Nobody has complained about it. But, once again, the issue here is we're going to increase that use on site, so we need to look at dust issues. Staff would like to outline the following findings. It is important to note that as an existing use of the same nature to the, to the west of the property, this SUP, if approved, will likely increase the adverse impact on residential uses. And as I've already said, the dust issue is something that we need to consider before making a final decision on this. At the December 2017, December 17, 2018 meeting, PNZ voted unanimously to recommend approval based on some conditions that they outlined, which I believe are included in your packets. Once again, this is not a rezoning case, it's an SUP, and so, we do allow reasonable conditions to be placed on site. And the PNZ did make some reasonable conditions to be placed on this property, one of them being providing a 10-foot setback, and then putting, the owner will construct a gated fence across the front entrance to the excavation site, as indicated in the site plan. I have some pictures showing the side view, side photos to the north. To the south is an ambulance service, to the east. And I, I want, and as you can see on the picture, to the west, there's an existing use to the west of this property. If, if you drive along Durst Street, it's all residential, I don't think we have any other industrial use. And I think in, in discussing this with the applicant, I did agree that this development is in close proximity to the loop, and so, a use of higher density. But, I believe that as you drive on most highways in the city, it, it is very common to see uses that will attract people to actually stop in the city to shop, eat, or dine. And so, putting an industrial use close to the highway, in my opinion, and experience, will not be an ideal thing to do. Want to see development that will make people who drive through Nogodoches want to take an exit and enjoy what the city has. And an industrial use, in my opinion, will not be the best land use for that development. So, I believe, and the applicant did answer all the questions that, or did explain why he wants to put in this development, I believe I include that in the packet as well. So, this representation to an end, and I'll be willing to take any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, so if there is anyone here that would like to speak for or against, they can do that now. Is there anyone that would like to speak for? Yes, sir?
I'm the applicant.
Yes, sir, please come up.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Miles Bradshaw, and I'm the prospective purchaser of this property, and that's my interest in trying to obtain this specific use permit to do what I think is, is the best use for this property, to, to, number one, get the value from the existing sand that is there, to eliminate what is currently now a bit of an eyesore and a potential safety issue, the 20-foot-plus cliff that exists on the property line between this property and Mr. Cobb's excavation site. Doing this project would eliminate that as well over time, and, and when you're finished, you'll have a nice piece of property that's leveled off pretty much more or less even with Mr. Cobb's property, and, and the residents would, of course, still be there. So, we, we think it's a, a great use for the property, and the fact that it's a specific, specific use permit, as opposed to a rezoning, means this isn't just suddenly industrial property. We're going to go in there, do what we need to do, and at any point, obviously, city council could pull that permit if we're not doing what we have agreed to do. And those conditions were approved unanimously by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I can tell you, I really appreciate their work, because they looked at it extra hard. We actually had two meetings, because we, we had the first one, and, and some folks didn't think they had quite enough information. Good points were made up about, well, if you, if you take 20-foot off the top of this property, what do you end up at the next boundary? And, and the next boundary is Ms. Hensley, and she's here, and, and so, so one of the things they wanted to get was topography maps, which made perfect sense. And so, we got topography maps to show that the slope from, from Cobb's boundary line over to Ms. Hensley's boundary line across the property is about a 10-foot drop. And so, so if you have a 20-foot cliff at Cobb's, it's only going to be 10-foot at Ms. Hensley's, if that makes sense, once it's leveled off. And that's if you level it off perfectly. So, so that was very helpful information that we provided to them. I think some of them may have even gone out and visited the site, which I think is also important, because you really get a feel for what's there, and what will be there when it's, when the project is complete. I can tell you that, like I said, the Planning and Zoning put on some reasonable conditions, we're in agreement with those, we have no issue with those at all. We've worked with Ms. Hensley, the adjacent landowner, to, to keep her happy, and, and let her know that, that, you know, the cliff's not just going to come and take off all her property and, and have it wash over to our side, because it's, it washes the other way anyway. But, but, but bottom line is, on this is, you know, there, there's, there been no opposition to it. There've been no complaints over what Mr. Cobb's been doing for 20-plus years. His, his site, and he, he may correct me if, if I'm wrong, but his site is, is pretty much level now. I mean, he still stores sand, and he, I think he digs and mixes and whatnot and sells, but, but, you know, to say now suddenly we're going to have this, everybody's going to want to dig sand off their property over there, that's just not going to happen. We're going to get our sand off and make it look compatible with what's in the area, and, and there won't be any more digging once, once it's level, because that's the best use of that property. It, you know, you can, anybody can look at that property, I think, and tell that someday it's going to be a, probably a commercial piece of property. It may be way down the road, but, but that's likely what it's going to be. And I think not removing the sand and leaving the cliff is going to cause a problem. It's going to, it's going to hurt the ability for, for development to, to occur naturally in that area, if it doesn't get, get taken away gradually over time. So, we respectfully ask for your approval of what PNZ has already approved unanimously, and I'm available for any questions as well.
Do I have a question?
Have you done a grading plan, a grading plan for how it's going to, I mean, to say it's going to be sloped right and all that, that's, that's a big cliff, and to try to get the grading to work on a narrow piece of property like that is, in my opinion, going to be pretty tricky. And I'm wondering if y'all have done a grading plan to show, to justify what you're saying, that it's going to be safe and pretty, and, and this cliff is going to be gone when you're through with it. Have you done that?
We have not done a specific grading plan. I, I do have, I call him my dirt guy, Tody Duckett, who, who is going to be the exclusive person who's going to take the sand off. I don't know, Tody, if you have.
Well, I mean, we would need an, an exhibit, and that exhibit would have to be, you know, part of the plan, to, you know, guarantee that, you know, that what is done is what is said will be done. And also, how are you going to access the site?
How are we going to access the site? There will be a, what's going to be a temporary drive, rock drive, on the, sort of the western half of the property in the front, that goes up behind the house, and then we'll have a gate, a locked gate and fence across, and that'll be the access point.
So, you'll drive up by that house, and then you'll begin to excavate, and all that dirt will be coming out there?
Correct.
Do you know how long it's been since Cobb has actually done excavation on his site?
I don't know.
Okay. That is a big cliff there. I agree with you, and it, it's probably more than 20 feet.
At places it is, and others it's, it's less, but, yeah.
One other question. Ms. Hensley, you said there was some arrangement between you and Ms. Hensley, I think it was lack of fence? I think it was discussing the planning and zoning meeting. Is there any other thing that she requested from you?
No, sir, she, what we, the, the agreement that I believe satisfied her, and she can speak to her, for herself, but was that we would not, we would not dig 10 feet away from her boundary line, rather than going right up to her boundary line?
I, I, my understanding, it was going to be 20 feet in the planning and zoning meeting.
It, it initially was, talked about as 20-foot, and then at the planning and zoning meeting, it was decided that 10-foot was enough, with the other condition that was included, which dealt with the, I mean, 10, 10-foot is what was ultimately approved by. Yeah.
Provided slopes and all that.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Leo. The first condition was that at the conclusion of the, of the operation, no vertical slopes or cliff faces greater than 10 feet would be left on site. And so, with that, combined with a setback of 10-foot on her boundary, I believe, my understanding is they felt like that was enough to take care of any sloping issues.
Okay, Ms. Hensley owns the property next to this property that is in question.
Right.
But Ms. Hensley doesn't live at that location, correct?
Well, she lives, she, she owns the property, there's two houses on it, and then there's a house in between that, those two, and then her house is the next one on Durst.
Thank you.
Could you speak to the timeline, anticipated extraction time?
We've estimated it'll take five to eight years to get it all out.
What sort of erosion control will be in place? Once you have sheer faces especially, you know, and my memory of that lot is that it does slope down toward Durst Street, and I, I'm curious what, what measures will be taken to, to control erosion from the excavation area?
Well, it, you, you're right, it slopes kind of down toward Durst and it's kind of eastwardly, kind of both.
Yes.
And the way the house is built, it, you know, the house, we're going to cut, start cutting right behind the house.
Okay.
So, so there's not going to be a, an erosion problem coming toward Durst Street.
Okay.
Because the house will block that, if that makes sense.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
We may have you back in just a minute. Is there anyone else that wants to speak for this proposed special use permit? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Katie Hensley. I'm not speaking for or against, mainly for, but in, in the planning and zoning meeting, we talked about some conditions that he would take, and, and we agreed on that, so therefore, I'm, I'm for it as long as those conditions are upheld. And I understood that it was the 20 feet altogether, 10 feet from the line, and then after that 10 feet, he would have to slope, and I forget the actual degree of slope. 45 degrees. So, that would actually be 20 feet, 10 feet flat, and then 10 more feet at a slope. And then, he's going to put like a silk fence around exactly where the borderline is, so that, that we know exactly where that edge is. And, and then as far as, was it going to be for one year or two years? I can't remember. They were going to do it for a certain amount of time, and then?
Five to eight years, he just said it. Five to eight.
She's talking about her, for the city to take another look.
Yeah, for the, for, because I thought you said it was.
We didn't put that condition on it.
And then, then if there's not any problems, then, you know, it would just be renewed, or he'd come back and apply for it again.
No, PNZ didn't vote on that, so if the SUP is granted, it's granted forever.
Oh, okay, well, I mean, that's, that's fine, unless something goes wrong, and then somebody can complain. But, otherwise, as far as the dust, I've lived there forever. With Cobb, I guess we never really noticed it, because there's a lot of trees there. And so, as long as my trees are still standing, or, or some trees are still standing, it shouldn't be that bad, so. So, I'm, I'm right there, I'm okay with it. I, I live, like, if this is his property, and it, it goes downhill like this, I'm, I'm kind of right over here, so it's still, you know, flowing towards my house. But if he controls the dirt and everything, it should not be a problem.
And so, how do you feel about it as far as your neighborhood goes?
I, I, I can't see it's going to make any difference. I mean, because the house, he says he's going to leave the house there and rent it, so what few houses there are right in that area, most of the others are rental property, except for me and the house next to me, those are residential.
Anybody have any other?
Any questions for me?
Do you, do you remember when there was last excavation on the lot beside that?
It, it has been a while, because, because I've seen him bring, you know, rocks and dirt and stuff in, and he resells that. But as far as having backhoes and stuff out there, it's been a while.
Does anything stand out from, in recollection from the, either from just the moving of the, the material, or from the excavation where there was a dust bowl, basically?
No, see, that's what I'm saying, I'm, no, but I guess it's just been there for probably 20, 30 years, and you just kind of get used to it.
Great, thank you.
And I think the trees help part of the dust, so.
Well, I mean, you keep mentioning the trees. Now, looking at the previous site, there's no trees.
There's no trees, no.
So.
And then he's going to also cut his trees, but there should be some left on my property.
That would make a pathway for dust and noise or whatever.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak for the specific use permit? Yes, sir?
Hello? My name is Ken Depish. I'm actually a commissioner on the Planning and Zoning Committee, and wanted to make sure that I was here today as, it was a pretty complex process when this application came up, and wanted to make sure if you had any questions about the process we went through, or any of the conditions we set on the, on the approval, that you had somebody to bounce that off of, rather than just the written record. So, if any of you have any questions, I'd like to field those.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
One of my concerns is, if we approve this, which I don't know if we will, what's to keep the next site from just being excavated, and the next one, and then there's all that I-2 zoning there? And why not just turn all of that into a, a mine?
And, yeah, this, the, and, and I don't know the literal slippery, slippery slope argument there. And I don't know geologically where the, where the sand ends there? That's a good question. We did talk about that. I know if you look at that, at that site, it is, the, it's surrounded by non-residential uses already, and I think, you know, we don't want to necessarily have a, an open, you know, strip mining operation in town. But, the, in, in my opinion, given the existing use, I think if somebody had come in and said, and this was kind of the opinion of, I can't really speak for the entire commission, but it was my opinion, that if, if the existing lot had not been next to a lot that had already been almost completely removed, the sand had almost been completely removed, and there was that rather large wall of, of sand that you see from the loop, this would not be probably something we'd want to consider. But given the circumstances and the fact that we have, this is going to need to be leveled out at some point, to make this land, I think, economically viable and developable in the future. And right now, I think this is probably the highest and best use of that property, given the fact, and I know one of the extenuating circumstances we had is our current comprehensive plan is old, and it doesn't account for the I-69 corridor coming through along that footprint. And I don't know exactly where, I don't know if anybody does, the frontage roads are going to be, but it's likely going to encourage commercial development in that area. In order to do that, it's going to have to be leveled at some point. So, from my perspective, I think just as a, an economic use, and, and trying to make that site so we can hopefully take the existing lot and do something with it that looks better, this is going to need to happen anyway. If we can do it in a way where it's not hurting anyone, then I think that's a pretty efficient solution. As for the surrounding lots, I, I do think you're right. At some point, we need to, to say, where does this end? Because it would be, I think, irresponsible to let there be just unmitigated sand extraction in that area. And I also think, one thing we did not talk about at the commission meeting, was the concern about having a lot that is just completely devoid of, of vegetation afterwards. I think it, one of the conditions that could be placed on it is that it needs to be.
Replanted.
Replanted with some viable, which would help with erosion in the future, and it would look nicer, so.
Okay, well, thanks a lot for coming and giving us that information. I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
I was, remember, there was some time in the planning and zoning meeting, it was discussed as to where the city could go out and take a look at the property and see if it was.
We did, yeah, I believe you were at that meeting. We discussed whether or not we were going to place a condition, either a, and you know, the, the specific use permits, you can place any condition you want as far as reapproval, or like a check-in at some point to make sure that, that the operator is utilizing the property correctly. like a check-in at some point to make sure that, that the operator is utilizing the property correctly. We did not do that, we didn't approve that finally, we discussed it. You know, it might be appropriate in this type of context to say, in a year or two years, we'll revisit this. If, if the use is still going on, is it, is it offensive to the neighborhood, is it offensive to the neighbors? That might be an appropriate thing for the council to do, because it may be all new council members at that point. And so, uh, and, and I know how hard it is to keep institutional knowledge in, um, in continuity. So, I, I, I do think that might be something to consider as a condition.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else for? Okay, is there anyone else that wants to speak against the specific use permit? Yes, sir?
I guess you want me up there?
Yes, sir, please.
I can project a little bit better from the back.
I bet you could sing opera to us, too.
Your, your audio system, your audio system stinks, I'm sorry, you can't hear anything in the back. But, so if I touch on something that I didn't hear, I apologize, and I apologize for not wearing a suit.
Can you give us your name and address, please?
Jim Snyder. Ten fifteen Lee Lane, which is back in the corner a little bit from there off Perry Drive. I've been there for forty-two years. I just wanna ask some questions. Why in the city? Why not outside the city? It's mostly sand there. It's a very fragile ecosystem. There's so little, so little topsoil. A guy came in, in the property behind me that I bought later, and used a bulldozer, just practicing, took the topsoil off, it only worked maybe five or six inches. It's almost all sand. It's sort of like a sand dune, it has rocks down below, but I was wondering, what minerals are they gonna get out of this property that they couldn't get out of a bigger place in the country outside of the city? It allows them to expand their operation, and it's not gonna create such a scar as this will. I mean, now, there's a scar there now, but it's gonna be twice as big. That's all I want you to think about. And I like them to think about it, because I'm not for or against, but things have a tendency to s- spread. And they'll get into the neighborhoods eventually if they keep taking stuff out, and it's gonna wash out. It's, or, you know, I have washouts that I've got to fill on my property. They're very hard, easy to get and hard to stop in sand. That's all I have, any questions?
In, in your forty years, or forty-two years, you said, do you remember dust issues from previous extractions?
Yeah, we used to. They built the, uh, the place on, uh, on Perry, I mean on Durst, for old folks. It's now Pine Lake Estates, I think it was. Anyway, yeah, when they were building that, we were first in there, a couple of years, I guess. We used to keep our windows open, get the breeze. Well, we had enough dust from my yard because the grass didn't cover the gra- all the ground, so dust would fly through the house. When they were building that, dust flew a little bit more, and then they started that fire and burned within twenty feet of my house. That didn't create dust, but it created a problem. Now, it's been much better since it, since it grew back up. And we've got trees around there, so that the wind has kind of stopped a little bit, they're, they're... And he's not that close to my property, yet. And I, I don't, this is the first thing I heard about, it was in the paper, so. I don't know a whole lot. I just know that it's, it's a city that I love. Uh, I don't like to see it torn out, and this, and, and I wonder if they can't get, I don't know how much rock they get out of there. Uh, they've gotta go down pretty deep, but the walls of that, where that cut is, are pretty high if you go out there and look at them. And they're just gonna get higher. You gotta taper it down quite a bit, and you gotta have something growing there. You take the topsoil off, and if you tie, if somebody said something about growing vegetation on it later, you just about gotta bring topsoil in, because there won't be any there. If you just go down the road a ways on the loop, where they threw out a lot of, uh, sold a lot of gravel and sand, I don't know who it was, but I mean, they're ju- they're trying to get trees growing there, and they're not growing very fast. It's just a thought. I, I, in the city, I have problems with huge industries. Now, cutting forest is one thing, because they grow back, if you plant them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak against the specific use permit? Okay, I will close the public hearing. And council, we can, uh, visit with Mr. Mantey for a little bit, if you'd like.
I'd just have one question. Is there requirements from the T C E Q about this type of location?
To be honest, I didn't, I didn't verify that. What I did was to look at how planners, um, uh, I looked at how planners review such developments, and that is what I had, uh, in, in your pocket, that, uh, when you do a stone and stand query, the dust can spread, uh, zero point three miles, so. And I don't think it's just the dust, we're looking at dust, noise, or any other pollution, it can go to that extent, but I didn't look at T C E Q.
One of the things is, now the planning and zoning committee approved, administration, you and administration, you'll, uh, object to this location?
Great, uh, I think, uh, that is exciting, because, uh, I, I, as a city planner, I, I, I wanna make sure at any day, probably in a hundred years when I'm dead, people would always remember me for making such decisions. And so I, I will still stand by my recommendation, that I'm not just looking at the development, I'm not looking at, I'm not just looking at the economic development, of course, we need the economic development, but how does it fit into the larger picture? That is why I'm, uh, even though P N Z gave a recommendation, I'm still, uh, telling the city council to consider all of those factors. And a good point that I think Councilman Moore brought about is, if this, if this S U P is approved, and the, that means the property next door can also say, well, I can also go ahead and, I also have to level my land to meet the standard that is already existing, and that neighborhood, uh, can go about doing that, and of course, let, let's also consider the I-69. Let's say in the future, none of this property is affected by the highway. We wanna put developments along the loop that will make people stop in agu duchess and enjoy the city. That wouldn't be a, a, a use that would attract economic development into the city, so.
Any other questions or comments? Are there any other specific use permits in, uh, anything else that's listed as agricultural? Or any other specific use permits that would be considered light industry in any of the other zoning areas?
Uh, I think, um, not, not with such a case. The next case would be another S U P, but based on what we've done, I don't think we've issued any S U P for such, uh, a land use in the past, so.
And what was your notification area? You know, he said he wasn't aware of it, and I know, I can't
Yeah.
tell exactly how far that is, and I know you had a diagram and I was supporting...
Two hundred foot, I don't know if he, uh, he's within this two hundred foot notification, but, uh, we didn't get anybody to respond.
Two hundred feet?
Yes, please.
But the potential dust impact is three tenths of a mile.
Sure.
Yeah, which is considerably further.
Councilmember Moore, I'm curious in your thoughts, I appreciate that we need to take it down twenty feet to be able to develop it, but site development is kind of what you spent your time doing, wh- what concerns do you have?
Well, I think there's a, one, the argument here is there's an eyesore. We, I would never vote to approve that, that, that needs to be remediated. And this is a strip of land through which you can change elevation with a slope. And so, you know, if I, I'm gonna, I'd make a motion that we, uh, requ- require, require two things. One, a grading plan with an actual survey, to show how the final grading was set. And two, a, uh, plan showing the restoration, so that when we're through, we actually don't end up with another cliff over there. You know, we, we have a legally binding document that says, we're gonna fix this problem that should have never been done in the first place. And by doing that, you know, we're going, you know, you just do a grading plan, it's a very straightforward engineering plan. And then we have that document, and that document along with a timing schedule and a restoration plan, then we'll know eight years down the road, I think it was five to eight years, then we've got a remediated site. And so we're, we're allowing to, uh, some mining to occur, and then when we act, get through, we know that we've actually are gonna achieve what we're, you're gonna be told that we're gonna achieve.
Thank you.
Upon hearing that, does that change your mind at all if, if that were to be added to?
Yeah, if the, if the applicant will agree to such, uh, legal document, and not just, uh, I would do it kind of deal.
Because a restoration plan is more than just dropping in some trees after you've taken on a lot of things.
It would require a significant amount of topsoil to be brought in.
Sure, so if, if you wanna make that a condition, yeah.
Yeah, I, I would certainly lean towards making that a condition.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions before we call for a motion?
And, uh, I think with a condition, we, we have to ask the applicant if he's in, he's okay with the condition before you make it, uh...
Thank you.
But I'd like for those conditions not to be made tonight.
Oh, okay.
That's not something he can do.
Oh, okay.
We bring it, they get back to us on a later date.
I'd like to see a, a grading plan before even proposing any additional conditions.
Okay.
So we would postpone it?
Yeah, I would. If it hasn't voted down to postpone it, one of them.
Yeah. Okay.
We, we, we still need to call the applicant back, too.
To see.
Yeah. If I could just very briefly, and there, and, and I'm sorry, I won't bring the big book up just yet. But there is, there, within our code, there is a very real distinction whether, whatever the motion may be. But if it's to, if you deny it with the thought of bringing it back soon, you, you can approve it under, under this code section, chapter one eighteen, this code section, you can approve it with condition, or you can deny it. But if you deny it tonight, then unless there's a less restrictive use and some other things with it, then that, this application for this specific use permit cannot be brought again for a year.
Why can't we table the motion? I mean, just postpone it.
Can we table the?
I mean, I, I, I've watched city council before, and they've done that before. And that's what planning commission did, they, they tabled it and brought it back differently, so why can't we just table it? You know, say this is what we need, and, uh, see if the applicant wants to do it.
Uh, we, I, I'm not aware off the top of my head that we couldn't, uh, table it.
Yeah, we can, we can table with...
If he's even interested in doing that.
Yeah, if he's interested in doing it, yeah.
If he's not, we go ahead and deny it.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So, Mr. Bradshaw?
Um, I, I like the idea of, of tabling the, the matter till the next meeting, and we can discuss these potential conditions that you guys are asking for. A grading plan, certainly we can look at that as well. So, uh, we, we would ask that you agree to table it, uh, if that's the correct motion. And I think, I actually was perusing the ordinances, and I think there were two different places where either I can request a continuance, I get one free one, and y'all can do it whenever you want, so.
So a grading plan and a restoration plan is what we would wanna discuss when we would come back, is that correct?
Yeah.
And I would say the grading plan has to be based on an actual field survey. So, you know, we need to know what that elevation is between you and Cole property. Because without that actual information, we can't calculate the slopes. I mean, you know, without informa- elevation, eleme- elevation, you can't do the slope. Because you may do a forty-five percent slope, and it, you know, runs way over his property, because your property's so narrow.
And the, and the topography map is not adequate, in your opinion?
I mean, that, uh, topo maps are plus or minus twenty feet or something like that, they're not accurate enough.
Okay. All right, we'll, we'll look into it.
Are you satisfied, Mr. Davis, we can table?
I, I am, and, and you do have the ability to put reasonable conditions, as you see fit. With regard to those, those conditions, that, that if there were conditions put on it, and if it was approved, then just very briefly, not way too far off in the weeds. But there are provisions within our code throughout, if those conditions are not being followed, then there can be actually revocation of that permit. Um, if there, if there are violations of, of this chapter in general, one eighteen, towards the end of it, there are provisions for both criminal and civil penalties. So there are, Councilmember Moore, I think you may have, may have mentioned, and, and Councilmember Anderson about the binding effect of it, but... Yes, we tabled it and carry it for another day.
Visit it later. Do we need a motion to table it, or I can just table it?
I think for this, it, it would be appropriate to make a motion to table.
Okay.
I move that we table agenda item number five.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded, any further discussion? There are none?
I want, I do have a discussion. Will you get with the applicant and make sure that everybody's on the same page on what additional information will be brought forward?
Sure.
Because it's, it's a little ambiguous at this point, uh, you know, and you need to get clear that, you know, we have a, a grading plan that's, that's actual, not just guessed at, and then, you know, a restoration plan that, that, uh, you know, is real.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Man. Uh, number six, we have another public hearing, consider a specific use permit allowing a communication tower in agricultural zoning on lot twelve, block fifty of Pearl Street.
Okay, uh, this is another S U P, to allow a communication tower on a property that is, as you can see on the map, it's along Pearl Street and Bowie Street. Uh, it's a nine point five acre lot in its own agriculture. Pearl City Ordinance, a communication tower would be allowed in this zone via an S U P. I have on the screen the location map of the property, and I have the aerial, um, view showing, uh, the property and the site, uh, for the communication tower. I believe it's, um, it's for, it's for Verizon Wireless, and they have their representative in the audience to answer any questions that may come up. The zoning designation is agriculture, and I believe this rezoning, I mean, this S U P will leave the zoning assets, there wouldn't be any other development on sites, apart from this communication tower, and that has been confirmed from the applicants and the owner of the, of the property, uh, himself. Per the two thousand and three comprehensive plan, um, about, I would say, uh, thirty percent of this property has been zoned for rural developments, and the remaining has been, is, has been left vacant. So, uh, once again, I will quickly go through the criteria that we look at in approving an S U P, uh, per the city ordinance. If you look at the area, whilst there are presently, uh, low intensity residential uses, this proposed use is for a well-engineered monopole, which would not have any adverse impacts or increase the development in the area. Apart from the pole, uh, confirmation from the applicant and the owner himself, they don't propose to do any other development on site. So in terms of compatibility, we don't, uh, staff believes this use will not have any adverse, uh, impact on surrounding properties. Uh, it's gonna go with an orderly growth and development, it will meet our, uh, standards, uh, and based on the site plan that was provided, I believe, uh, it's an engineered drawed, drawn plan, and so it is gonna be an orderly development on site. Supporting facilities, the site is adequately served with all basic utilities. Apart from the pole, they, they don't plan on doing anything else on site, but, and so I, I, I don't see any other, uh, issue with any facilities being built on site again. Uh, drive, drives and, and parking, a drive will be provided on site. Uh drive, drives and parking, a drive will be provided on site. Uh based on the plan submitted and in interaction of the applicants, um the pole will be left to function on its own. They will probably be coming in every once in a while to do uh routine maintenance. And then when you look at nuisance on site, uh staff agrees that during the construction stages, we'll probably have some noise occurring in the neighborhood with regards to construction or bringing the pole on site. But right after the construction, uh the applicant has uh informed staff that it's, it produces no noise. And will, the only issue is gonna be a tall pole that can be noted from anywhere, but it wouldn't have any other nuisance on site again. There, with my experience in planning, there, there's always been the issue with citizens talking about the impact of communication towers on residents and so many other issues. But I, I don't think this will be anything of that sort. Landscaping per the site plan provided, uh clearing of trees and vegetation on the site shall be held to a minimum only. The applicant informed staff and is here to confirm that. The only part they will clear on site will be where the pole is situated. Any other tree or any other landscaping, natural vegetation or any uh, any other natural feature on, on, on site will be left access. Uh none, none of that will be touched. Uh we did look at a com- uh two thousand and three comprehensive plan and um it, it encouraged uh sparsely populated areas with limited development. That are still distinct from more urbanized areas. So we believe that uh this use, that the current zoning for the area is agri- agriculture. Uh this use will not change the zoning, it will not bring about any development that will change the, the intent of the agricultural zone on site. And so, uh staff believes this will fit perfectly with uh the, the city's comprehensive plan. Uh per the FEMA flood plan, uh which I believe I have here. Um half of the proper, um half of the property lies within uh the flood plain. Uh but the good thing is if we go back to this map, you, you can see that the sites for uh, for the pole would not even um have anything to do with the flood plain. It's just gonna be right on the edge of, of the site and so we don't anticipate any issues with the flood plain. However, P and Z uh was um very um careful to point out the fact that there's a creek flowing within the property. And so they put a condition, uh they call the stream management uh press uh zone, which is basically saying do not pollute the creek. Uh during construction or for any other development on site. And that was a condition that they have put on, on this uh use. And so the applicant has informed us, uh apart from the communication tower, they, they don't plan on doing anything on site. I had a discussion with the owner, uh he did inform me, he, he's a native of Nogodoches and he, he's aware of the flood plain. And does not plan on doing anything close to the flood plain. In fact, one of the reasons why he, he believes this a good use is the fact that since this is a flood plain, he doesn't anticipate any uh construction or development on site. That will trigger any impact on the creek. And so he believes just putting a monopole tower on site will be a good fit for the, the property, which uh staff believes it is very accurate. So uh staff recom- we did send out uh notification letters to be pulled in the two hundred feet. Uh with, uh nobody responded in opposition or.
I'm fixing to respond whenever I get a chance.
Sure. Okay, and I have a map here showing the site location, uh this is what I, we, we drew in our G I S map. Uh as you can see, it's far away from the creek. And I, I, I did include um pictures of the proposed uh pole, uh this is the side view, uh side photos, um properties to the south, uh to the east and to the west. As you can see, there are some residential development on site. Now we believe just putting the pole on there will not increase density, it will not bring about any change in the current uses within the site. And so this is more like a peaceful development that will uh fit well into the neighborhood. So staff believes it's a good addition for the city. Uh our recommendation is that this uh development would maintain the natural vegetation and will not interfere with the flood zone on site. Uh staff believes this is a great addition to the city by, by enhancing the communication reception in the city. Uh one of the things that uh planning is supposed to look at with regards to communication towers is to find out if the applicants can actually co-locate on other existing communication towers. But based on my, my discussion with him, they actually tried to look at other communication towers to pull the poles on. But um there isn't my, any around and so they feel they had to put a, a new uh one on site. Uh the development where has met um our criteria as per the um section one, one eight point one seventy three. And staff would, uh staff reviewed uh the preliminary draw, uh drawings that has been submitted. And we believe the applicant, uh since that drawing is drawn by an, a professional engineer, we believe it to be constructed with all the safety requirements uh that, that Verizon uh already does in other cities. Therefore, we recommend that the city council approves uh this SUP with a condition that was uh outlined by P and Z. Which is basically saying, uh even during the construction stages, whenever they come on site, um there should be measures to be put in place to protect uh the creek. That is uh, uh the creek on site. So uh this will be my presentation to an end and I'll be willing to answer any questions you may have.
Well, we will, uh this is a public hearing, so uh we are going to hear uh from those of you that would like to speak for or against. So is there anyone here that would like to speak for granting the specific use permit? Mister, come on in.
Name's Cody Cogdill, uh with CMI acquisitions representing Verizon Wireless. Here to answer any questions you may have or anybody in the audience.
Is this a standalone tower that has had guide wires?
It's a standalone monopole.
Um so, we're getting ready to go into a five G world, right?
Yes, sir.
Will this be a, I mean, in my understanding, and is the five G is a denser uh pole location, but smaller poles, is that right?
The technology of five G or four G has no bearing on the actual pole itself. It's strictly antennas and radios at the top.
So a five G pole would be the same as a four G pole?
All of them are the same.
Really?
It's all has to do with the antennas and radios, has no bearing on the pole itself.
So uh I, okay, I was under the impression that there would be a lot more poles distributed out, uh you know, even like the size of a uh telephone pole. And that that would be an antenna and there'd be a lot more of them, is that incorrect?
No, that, that's a different technology, it's, it's, that is a different deployment. This is a conventional macro deployment to cover more area. Uh so we won't need as many of those small poles as what you're mentioning. Those are a small cell technology uh that in relationships and partnerships with the cities and with utility companies. That in intersections or uh high traffic areas, churches or malls, instead of placing a new one of these towers. Where we've got towers closed, but they just don't get what we need. We can work with the, the city and replace light poles and place a small antenna or uh work with the, the power company and place antennas on, uh replace a pole extended up five feet and place an antenna on top of it. We're doing this a lot in the larger uh cities, Houston, I've got a probably sixty or eighty I'm doing in, uh like this in Houston. And you don't even notice those uh at, at all. But to do those, uh to replace something like this, it would take a lot, cause this covers many miles.
Gotcha.
In, in areas, so it's different, different stuff, but you're, you're correct.
Is it, this is line of sight, uh transmission?
No, it is not line of sight, that's a microwave uh technology as a line of sight. Uh this is conventional cellphone uh where you can be in your house or building or, or anywhere, it's just.
Behind the hill.
Based on frequency, right? Based on frequency, right?
That is correct, it's Verizon Wireless. So your AT and T or something like this, it, it, it wouldn't work. But AT and T and other carriers uh are, are definitely welcome to, to co-locate on that tower as well. It's, they're required, Verizon as the owner of that uh tower, are required to open it, open it to co-location to other carriers. So this would also mitigate the, the chance for additional towers to be built in that area. So you have one standalone tower.
Are all towers connected, hardwired into the system?
No, uh.
Excuse me for asking these questions.
No.
Now we got an expert here.
No, it's no problem at all. I'm fortunate enough uh that I, 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 my field and my background expands outside of just site acquisition and the real estate side of it. In some of the more remote facilities, when you're way out in the country and such, where fiber optics uh can't reach the facility. And copper based, land based uh backhaul services isn't adequate anymore, it just doesn't carry enough signal. It's like having a two inch water line trying to, you know, feed, you know, two hundred houses. It's, it's what it's become these days in the communications industry and the technology. Uh so what they do is they have microwave dishes, the, the round dishes you sometimes see on the far out towers, that is actually muxing. It's the large water line running down the, the, the road to feed the big house or the big community down the way, basically is what it is. So not all of those are physically hardwired, no. This one would have a, a fiber optics going to it, so.
Gotcha.
It would have a limitless amount of bandwidth over, over time.
Okay. What would it do to the footprint of Verizon reception? Cause right now it's pretty spotty from what I understand.
It, it's, it's definitely gonna increase it in that area, for sure. Uh we were actually looking to be closer, a little bit more into town, but we, we just couldn't find the adequate uh property. We were looking at one uh there behind the Barn Hill Steakhouse, but we, we just couldn't come to an agreement with that, with that particular property owner. Uh there's an existing cell tower just catty cornered across the way uh that I looked at possibly co-locating on, but that one is at maximum capacity. It's already got a couple of carriers on it, it's been uh structurally enhanced many times over already. Most towers are pretty slick and smooth, the, the monopoles are, this one has had plates bolted to it many times, cause it's at, at capacity. So it, it wasn't a viable option. Uh but I definitely looked around uh closer in the town to even, you know, help the coverage, but this was our best option.
How far do you anticipate it expanding the coverage, is that something that pushes out most of the city or?
Now that, I'm, I'm, I can't s- speak to, I apologize. But, but, but you're, you're, you're probably uh one and a half miles, I'm gonna guess, in each direction as far as the, the diameter or radius goes. A three mile diameter is, is kind of an estimate, I would best, best case, so.
Is the reason it's so close to the road to minimize the cost of the driveway?
That is correct, it, it definitely helps. And that's also to keep it, you know, closer to our, our, our main goal, which is town. Cause the further, uh I don't know which direction we'd be looking at here, the further west I believe we go also puts us, starts, starts putting us into a flood plain. Which then becomes uh very cost prohibitive uh for the communications towers. So we have to go through uh very in-depth uh environmental situation, so we, we try not to do that.
Well, you can go a long ways before you get into it. The, the question is, 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 is that, is, would there, would it be better aesthetic for the city to have a tower located a hundred feet back from the road? Or would it be best to be located right on the road? That's, that's an aesthetic uh question and.
This, this one is, I don't have the, I got a plan here, but I believe we're what, thirty feet back?
Yes.
Is that about what we're setting back? Alright, it's alright. The, the other thing is also with security of the site. Uh it's, it's well known uh that communications facilities are a target for copper thieves. So the closer they are to the road, the, the more seen, we're a little less apt for those situations. The, the further back in the boonies, I guess we could use that word, that we go, it's, it's an easier, low hanging fruit target for thieves. And that's another reason why in all possible, you know, we really prefer a chain link fence over, some communities want us to build a concrete wall or a wooden fence. And that's great, great for aesthetics, but it kills us over time. Thieves jump that wall, take whatever they want, and then we're constantly having to repair that facility, constantly. At least whenever there's a more porous visual uh barrier there, we can actually see what's going on and it's a deterrent. Oh, but that is a. To the center, it's fifty-nine foot seven, we should have a closer, here's. Right there, it's twenty-nine feet, so it's almost thirty feet from the edge of the road.
To the tower though.
To the edge of the compound, it's fif- it's almost sixty feet, fifty-nine, seven, from the edge of the road to the center of the tower.
Anything else?
This may be outside your realm as well, but um.
I'll try.
What uh, what possibilities are there for, I, I understand the, the security issue. But what possibilities would there be for some sort of relatively light landscaping? Because this is in a, in a residential area and when you come down Bowie Street, you're looking, you're gonna be looking straight at a chain link fenced um area full, filled with equipment. And some even relatively light landscaping would improve the aesthetics without harming the, the security aspect, I think.
We wouldn't have any problems uh with, with planting some shrubs or some bushes and, and such like that, I don't, I don't believe that's a problem at all.
Yeah.
Uh the one thing we'd like to try to keep from is uh having any type of irrigation to, to maintain them. Cause that's just something they're not in the business of and so.
And, and in that area, irrigation won't be an issue.
Yeah, probably won't. Everything's running downhill there. So I, I, I don't think that's a problem at all, we, we can add that as a condition with no problem. Add some shrubs, some, you know, Indian Hawthorne or something, you know.
I don't agree with the idea that irrigation isn't necessary, but we don't require irrigation anyway, so we, it wouldn't be right to require it of you since we don't require it of anybody else. You know, if it's dry in the summer, it doesn't, there's not gonna be any runoff to run down there.
Yeah, yeah, Texas.
Well, I'll tell you from my personal experience that that area has a pretty healthy supply of groundwater. Water, I don't think will be a big issue, especially sixty feet back from the curb there, because it, it drops off enough that uh.
Thank you, Mr. Cogdill.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate it.
Captain. Thanks.
Uh, anyone else want to speak for the specific use permit? Okay, how about against? Come on.
My name is Clarence Riddle and I live within two hundred feet of this proposed tower. I, if, if you stand on the, the southwest corner, you're gonna be within two hundred feet. Now I have the, I have the only standard city si- uh city lot sized lot there. Uh all the other lots that border are small. So un- unless you, i- if you had an outline of, of, of the different properties in that area, you'll, you'll see what I'm talking about. Now, I have concerns about the amount of radiation, particularly this antenna form uh that, that this representative wants to put up. And al- also there is an issue sometimes if you're too close to one of these big towers, that you, you can't even get service. I mean, if, if you look it up on the internet. And, and also, what about the, the long-term effects of just continuous radiation? I know it's not a lot, but you know, if you've got three or four different carriers and this is a major's, a major site. Then you, you have an accumulation of radiation from each one of these, these transmissions to the individual, um you know, cell sites. Also, I'm a ham radio operator. And uh by law, uh I could transmit up to two thousand watts, and I know it's not the same frequency. And, and that, that's on peak radiation or, you know, peak power. Uh the, just a standard carrier could be a thousand watts. Now, what, what is that gonna do? Uh how's it gonna affect me? Am I gonna have to stop being a ham radio operator? Now, I actually don't have that kind of power uh in place, but I've been a ham since the seventies. So I mean, it, you know, um y'all haven't heard from me, I'm sitting right underneath the antenna. He, he put, puts his antenna where he is because he doesn't wanna build a road. But if he builds a road, he's gonna be even closer to me, cause I'm on Travis Street, two twenty-nine Travis Street. And, and you know, also, I don't know if I, if I mentioned it earlier, if you're too close to one of these big cell sites, sometimes you can't get service. If, if he's got an antenna form and I'm with AT and T carrier right now, um you know, I might be, not be able to get cellphone service. So, you know, there, there's a lot of these things here that's gonna affect me. Now, I know there's a lot of rental area in that site, in that area, but it, it would seem to make more sense if he'd put it down there close to where that house is. That house has never flooded. Now, I've seen, I, I've, I've lived there, I've owned that property since uh somewhere around ninety-two, or between ninety-two and ninety-four. Um I lived at Rio whenever they had the big flood in, in seventy-five, that, that went up to the second floor and all that kinda stuff. Now, I actually didn't see it, you know, in that area, you know, out in the pasture, but. but I've never seen that much water in that property. It's always been down in the corner. There might be, oh, maybe six inches of water or something like that. There's plenty of that property that could be used for an antenna form. You know, we're not talking about just one carrier. You know, he said that, you know, you could have multiple carriers, just like you do up at Butcher Boys. I know you've seen there are two carriers where there's at least three different carriers only or there's two towers that I remembered that has at least three different, you know, things on it. Now, I actually haven't tried to get out at that site or see what kind of signal I would have. But one thing that's not being talked about is if you're too close to this big old antenna form, you may not be able to get a good reception or you may not be able to transmit from there. So there's a lot of these things, including the resale value of my property. You know, there's a lot of people out there that look at that kind of stuff. You know, if I'm sitting underneath an antenna form, you know, and I try to sell my property, you know, I'm not going to get too much for it. You know, I mean, I'm not even going to get the, you know, the proper value simply because I have hazards around me or potential hazards. So, you know, a lot of this right here is really affecting, you know, my situation too. I don't want to go back to a landline on telephone. So I'm against it.
Thank you, Mr. Riddle. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak against?
Can we have a response to some of those concerns? You know, I mean, you know, the radiation, the impact of cell coverage, the ham radio, that kind of stuff.
The frequency in which Verizon transmits at is licensed through the FCC. So it's federally communications licensed frequency. It'll have no interference on his ham radio at all.
That's for sure.
That's for sure. Yes, it's a licensed frequency.
Could you tell us what that frequency is?
No, I cannot.
Yeah, well, it could be in the gigahertz range.
I do not know. I don't have that information. That's a licensing thing. I apologize. I don't have that.
Mr. Cogdill, I'm going to ask you to address the council. That's okay. We can give you another opportunity to speak if you'd like to, but we want to try to avoid the back and forth. But you go ahead and ask the question.
Yeah, and so what you're saying is, okay, so what is, has, what research has been done? Because other people have mentioned to me that they are concerned about the impact of radio, you know, microwaves on health. I don't know. I haven't done that research. I don't know what's out there. And so what have you, what does the science say about that?
There's not any. There's not any impact. We operate within the federal health guidelines of the US government with no hazard in radiation. I mean, even on rooftops, I walk around these antennas constantly and I've had no issues. I've been in this industry since ninety-six, I guess. I've been around this technology. I mean, people are concerned about the radiation. You would think if there was that much concern, what about that direct radiation you're going to have putting that phone right next to your head, receiving that signal? I mean, it's the same thing, it'd be, you know, no different than any other communication, wireless communications, you know, ham radio. It's still emitting, you know, wireless radiation through the air. It's the same thing that's been used for a century.
Do you know what the power output is on the radios that would be put on the proposed tower?
I do not. I don't believe it's in these drawings. Bear with me.
I hadn't seen it, but...
It's usually towards the back. Just bear with me for just a moment. It's not a common question. I'm not seeing that listed in these drawings. It's not a typical item as this is a Verizon-owned tower itself. So they don't usually put that information on there because they can update and upgrade and change out their antennas at their will. You know, so being, they have to come through and usually get a building permit for any construction, modify that. I apologize. I don't have that type of information handy.
One of the things about radiation leaks, I know that back in the mid-nineties, AT&amp;T was starting up their fiber optics. It was much more safer than the copper hardwiring because of leakage through the type of material it covered up, the copper wire, compared to what the fiber optics covered up. It was, at that time, it was like, you know, power towers, you know, running the hybrid power line. Stop cows from having milk. So, you know, it was one of those myth, type myth that bringing in the fiber would, you know, be a health issue. But it was less of a health issue than it was hardwiring.
Yeah, that is true because it was glass insulated. All the fiber optics is actually glass. Yeah, I mean, if, you know, if there was some... I hate to use the word merit, I guess, to the claim of the radiation from the antennas being a true hazard. I would think with the, you know, hundred million probably plus users we have in this country and the hundred thousand plus cell towers that are scattered across this country, there would be this massive ramp-up of issues and lawsuits and, you know, world health, you know, concerns and there's not.
And so the two other issues he said is, does it impact if you have one type of cell and there's a big tower next to it, does that, would that have any impact? Like if you're AT&amp;T and you put a...
Zero.
There's no impact?
Zero impact because they're, again, separately licensed communications antennas. They have a specific frequency. That's the reason when you're on your phone next to a guy with AT&amp;T or... There's no issues.
And the one last question is, have y'all, what kind of research has been done on the impacts on property values?
As far as research, I can't, I really can't speak to it. I can tell you that it's more so, especially in the younger generation, that when they're real estate shopping, one of the first things they do is pull out their phone and they want service. That's one of the things. And personally, being a middle-aged guy, I wouldn't buy property without some form of service. You know, I'm a country guy, fish hunting, everything else. And, you know, I like being out sometimes away without service. But as far as owning a place, I couldn't do it. I got to have good service. You know, I want my communications. So, you know, I would say it's probably going to depend upon the generation. You know, if you have an older generation looking at a particular house and then maybe it, maybe that might be an eyesore, maybe. A younger generation, they think, I got great service. I don't, I just can't imagine having any effect on property values at all. In most people's eyes, until I got into the actual, I was, before you mentioned the copper and the fiber optics, that was where I actually started at in ninety-six up till oh-five. And then in oh-five, I ventured into the tower side of things. So I'm very well-versed in the copper and fiber optics. So, anyway, now I forgot my train of thought. Ted Gummett, I got sidetracked. But anyway, there's, there's... Just, there's not any effect. There's not any, you know, value issues or anything like that. I'm open to any questions, please.
I will say for your information and for our information, according to the FCC website, they allow a maximum of five hundred watts effective radiated power, which equates to about sixty watts of actual radiated power per channel. And most are only a hundred watts with an actual radiated power of five to ten watts per channel.
Makes sense, makes sense. And all of our licensing, all of our communications equipment, it's licensed through the federal government. We have to have license for each one of our frequencies. So we have to adhere to those guidelines.
Yeah, the federal government actually issued a frequency.
Yes, we have to buy that. We have to buy that at an auction. And it costs billions for those auctions. It's ludicrous.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
We'll have you back up in a minute. Is there anyone else that would like to speak against the specific use permit? Yes, sir?
Hello.
Hello.
Ken Depeschigan, I'm a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. When this specific use permit, and let's not forget, it's a specific use permit just like the last application we were discussing, came before P&amp;Z, one of the items we had discussed was placing a condition that would be a proportional response to the fact that we're losing... You know, this is one of the entryways into town along Austin Street. This land is visible. I would like to see it possibly not have a house that is overgrown. And that's a code enforcement situation probably. But if we're going to allow an agricultural piece of land to not rezone to industrial to do this, but to get a specific use permit to allow for what is an industrial or commercial use, in my opinion, we should extract as much and protect as much of the character of the remaining property as possible. One of the things we should do, the Benita Creek runs through this property and we've already discussed that the land, according to Mr. Cogdill, is basically non-developable near the creek. It would be even too costly to put a tower down there with no people living in it. And so one of the things I thought would be a good condition was to get an easement along the creek that would allow for the expansion of the Benita Creek Trail in the future. I know that's part of our master plan. We're talk, we like to plan for the future, is to have the trails basically encircle the town. And I know the trail doesn't connect to the southern end of this property, or the northern end. But in my opinion, I think it would be good to consider these tracks as they come up for that future expansion. And so that's one of the conditions I think the council should consider on this property. I know there's some concern about whether or not that is going to be considered taking and whether or not the city has to pay for the value of an easement. Well, I don't know what the, first of all, even if it were a taking, I don't know what the value of it would be. As we know, nobody can develop in that part of the property anyway. Secondly, we've already put a stream-side management zone condition on this property, which says you can't cut trees in that area. You have to protect erosion into the creek, which I think is another good condition. To me, that's more of a taking than saying, let people walk across your property. It would be a non-exclusive easement and it would basically protect a future extension of the trail. It wouldn't even be used anytime soon unless we could connect the trail through. And finally, I mean, it's a proportional thing. That's really, I think, the standard here. And Mr. Cogdill told the P&amp;Z that in some of the Dallas suburbs, if you put up a tower such as this, they want to get a multiple twenty-five to fifty-foot reservation on the front and back end of your property, either for future utilities use or I don't know what they're going to do with it. And those are accepted conditions that they place. And so surely, a non-exclusive trail easement in a floodplain would not approach that level of what I would consider probably closer to a taking. And so I think it's something to consider. I understand that the city has to consider its legal liabilities on this and also its relationship with property owners. But I think in a, you know, in a perfect world, this would be a, probably a future residential development on the part of the property that can be developed. And in my opinion, if I were going to put apartments or townhouses here, having access to the trail would be a benefit and not a detraction. So I think it would benefit everyone.
So for clarification, you're speaking against?
That's right. I wouldn't speak against it unless we had some proportional conditions that would allow us to access the property in the future when the trail expands.
You would be comfortable with it with an easement condition attached to it?
I would.
But can we do that? I mean, this is not what the agenda item is about. I mean, we're pushing, the property owner is not even here to agree to this.
We haven't seen the property.
Cody is only representing the lease part. The property owner is not here to discuss this matter.
Why don't we finish the public hearing? And then we will have this discussion. Is that okay? Okay. Anything else you want to add?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak against the proposed specific use permit?
Can I speak to...
Of course.
In relation to what he was...
Yes, it's okay. In relation to what I brought up in the last meeting, that it was accepted in Dallas-Fort Worth. It is not. I've got a site outside of McKinney and actually falls into the McKinney ETJ, that the city of McKinney has been well-known to extend their long arm into the ETJ, pushing requirements on to permitting and such like that, even though it's in their ETJ, which isn't right. I, and they've lost two cases. This is a third case that is being brought. It is not being accepted by Verizon Wireless or the property owner that they require a fifteen-foot right-of-way in the rear of the property on an existing county road, then Highway three-eighty in the front. They want an additional twenty-five foot of easement for a future water line. It is not being accepted. Verizon Wireless Council is working with the city to mitigate this. I'll be very straightforward and blunt that I believe it is almost to the word of extortion to require a property owner that wants to develop their property to give something to the city in exchange for a permit or an SUP. I think that's the way I would call it. I mean, it'd be like Walmart coming into town and saying, okay, well, you're going to feed the city or feed our council member for, you know, for a month in exchange for us letting you build this here. That's the way I view it personally.
You're talking about what you're doing with the city of McKinney? Or are you talking about asking for an easement?
Talking about any of this situation requiring a property owner to give an easement to the city in lieu of a permit, an SUP, or a reclass or anything like that. I've had extensive conversations with the owner. He is not for this for many reasons. Liability. Is this going to have fences along each side of the path? Can anybody answer that? Does the existing path have fences on either side of it? So people can just wander across his property through his pasture? Then he's opal to, open to liability and lawsuit. They twist an ankle out there in a cow hole. What if he wants to sell this property? Now it's divided. So it's significantly decreased the value of his property. What if he wants to put cattle back on this property? Now you've got, you're going to have to have some type of gating at either side of this. Who's going to be responsible for keeping these gates closed? Same thing with if he wants to start pulling hay off of it again. Taking equipment back and forth there, people being out there. It's not a safe environment.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Counsel.
Does anyone else have anything to say before I close the public hearing? Okay, public hearing is now closed. Counsel. Questions and discussions?
I'd like to address the issue of the trail. I love a trail and I think we ought to have a long-term plan for creating a trail. But I believe there's a Court Cage Nolan versus California Coastal Commission that basically says you can't do that. You know, you can't, you can't, you can't say, in order for this permit, you've got to do this. And so we're not allowed legally to... And so we're not allowed legally to do that. Um, but I do believe that we, uh, should totally separately begin a long-term plan for extending our, our trail system along, along the creek. That's, uh, my thinking.
Where's the closest communic- other communication tower to that area?
Probably on North Streets.
Okay.
It's on North Street.
I apologize, we stand.
The position was on North Street.
Apologize. Uh, it's, it's the one there at the storage facility, uh, just as you're coming back into town on, coming up. I'm, I'm ignorant to your streets. I apologize. Uh, I believe it's Austin. There's a storage facility. It's, it's in the, in the back of the storage facility.
Okay.
So, and it's, uh, I guess as a bird flies some mile.
Okay.
Guessing.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Garth, you have any questions? Jay, anything else?
No.
No? Okay. Uh, then Chair will entertain a motion. Oh, yes, sir?
If I may just, just, just very, very briefly.
Uh-oh.
And this time I am bringing the big book. Is, is, ju- just, just very briefly, and let me say this, that I appreciate Mr. Depesch's comments very much. Um, I appreciate his service very much on planning and zoning. I appreciate all his good works with Nedco. And I could go throughout town. He's, does fantastic work in our community and it is to be commended about that. I, I certainly appreciate his thoughts on, with regard to, um, a condition for a, 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 um, easement essentially. But I would remind just briefly that, that in our, in our code, that with regard to a condition, you may place reasonable conditions, uh, that, that landscaping, uh, that would be, uh, for public interest and welfare of the community. Or I think it was suggested by, uh, P and Z for a streamside management zone, uh, as, as, has been promulgated by the, I believe, the, uh, the Forest Service, Texas Forest Service. But with regard to, and I appreciate your comments, council member, more very much, that we do need to be cautious with regard to conditions such as a, uh, easement or a trail easement. You're exactly right. The Nolan case and then the Dolan case also on the federal level, I, and I've not read those in its entire, their entirety in a while. Do speak and, and the, the, the basic issue, one was an easement going to a beach and the other, uh, was what's known as an exaction, uh, with regard to a trail easement. Um, and then that, that standard essentially has been adopted by the, the city Flower Mound versus Stafford case here in the state of Texas. So we have to be very cautious that we don't go beyond what a reasonable condition would be, uh, where we cross into, for example, a constitutional violation such as a takings of, which is a violation of the Fifth Amendment to the United States Constitution. And then there's, there's state constitutional issues as well. So we have to be very cautious about that or that we don't get into a contract type zoning or a takings really situation with this. So I just wanted to make that very clear. Also, one last thing, and then I promise I'll take my big book and I will sit down, is that, uh, if somebody was so inclined to make a motion to approve this specific use permit and if, uh, they wish there to be reasonable condition that would be based, um, on public interest and welfare of the community, uh, such as shrubbery, um, or a streamside management zone, that would need to be, uh, a part of that motion as well to make sure that that's included, that that's memorialized.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Depesch. Any other questions for him? Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, so if we're ready, uh, Sam would like to make a motion.
I would move that we approve with the condition that some landscaping is put in place to conceal the, uh, at least the defense and equipment area, at the base and the stream.
Stream management zone.
And the stream management side as well, yes.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, question passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Everyone, uh, participated in this discussion. Agenda item number seven, uh, can, consider the ordinance, amending ordinance number seventeen seventy-eight dash nine dash eighteen appropriating various amounts, et cetera. Hello, how are you doing?
Hi, Mayor, Counsel. I'm Mayor Yureski. I'm the Airport Manager for the City of Nacogdoches. I'm before you tonight um, to ask that you consider amending ordinance number seventeen seventy-eight dash nine dash eighteen. This ordinance has appropriated the funds and it has been, our budget has been adopted for this fiscal year, beginning October first and ending September thirtieth. And I'm before you to ask you to amend it because the Mickey Elliott Family Foundation has made a grant to the airport for the purpose of installing a precision approach path indicator, which we call a Pappy Light System. Um, this would be a good thing for our airport. So I'm before you tonight to ask for permission to receive those funds and expend them to pay for that system. Any questions?
Outstanding. Are there any comments from anyone here about this item? No? Okay, Counsel. Any questions or comments?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, so we need to, an ordinance to approve the, I mean, a, a motion to approve, uh, the ordinance amendment.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the ordinance, amending ordinance number one seven seven eight dash nine dash eighteen.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. We approve item number seven as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? What an outstanding gift. That is wonderful. Uh, and number eight, presentation of a first quarter of two thousand eighteen nineteen fiscal year financial update. Mr. Jeffers, good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. This, uh, first report doesn't have a lot of meat on the bones and so it will be pretty, uh, brief when we get the mid-year report. Then we begin talking about a lot of other issues associated with where we are. We look at revenues. The property tax is down fifteen percent. We don't think that that's an area of concern. When this report was prepared, we had not received the, uh, receivables from December the thirty-first. We now have those and we received one point five million dollars. And I wish that I could tell you what that did to the fifteen percent, but looking at it, I didn't have the, uh, correct number. Apologies, we'll get that to you later. We all know that sales tax is down a little bit. It's a little too early to know whether or not that's a point of, uh, concern. None of us like it, but, uh, the sales tax tends to fluctuate for our community. Then revenues overall were down about five percent. Most of that attributed to the property tax. Looking at general fund expenditures, they are all within expectations and we are anticipating savings in unfilled positions. And we'll have more information on that as the year progresses and then update the council. We have an estimated ending cash balance of a little bit over one point five million dollars after the twenty-five percent. So those are operating reserves that the city council could access for whatever you deem appropriate. We tend to be conservative about that and we ask that city council not utilize those funds for anything unless it's really worthy until we get to the mid-year point. So we have a better understanding as to what is happening with our budget. We look at the, uh, utility fund. Water sales are down, uh, two percent. Overall sales down one percent. That's not unusual. We're in our winter, winter months and so we're going to see water consumption less than what is normal. Expenses are within expectations and estimated ending, uh, cash balances above the reserve. In operations, there's two point three million. And then we have, uh, thirteen million in proposed capital and we have the bond payment of, uh, two point nine million dollars. And the sanitation fund, revenues are within expectation. Also expenses are within expectation. And then looking at ending, uh, cash balances, we have two point five million dollars above the reserve. I want to emphasize with the sanitation department, it's important, uh, not important, it's actually required by state law that we have to set aside monies to take care of clo- post-closure as well as closure. And we also have to set aside monies for the construction of future, uh, sales. Madam Mayor, that concludes my report. Be happy to answer any questions after public comment.
Is there any public comment after our first quarter financial update? Hearing none. Counsel, any questions or comments? Nope. Thank you, Mr. Jeffers.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
We will move on to agenda item number nine, consider the following board appointments. And I must commend Counsel for, uh, the interview process that we do and the, the number and the quality of the applicants, uh, we are getting of people that are passionate about helping their city is truly uplifting and inspiring for us. And it's an extraordinary thing to have for a community to have that many people that want to, to help. We had more people apply than we had positions and, uh, so we have made the best choices that we feel we can. Uh, for the Airport Advisory Board, I would like to nominate Sammy Smith and Keith Rayburn. To, uh, each of those would be two-year terms. So I need a second and then we need to vote on this.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. On the Building Standards Commission, uh, we would like to nominate Michael Bailey, Rusty Sanders, John Anderson, and Sally Swearingen. And those are each two-year terms.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. On the Health Code Advisory Board, we have three members and each of those are a three-year term. Robin Thacker, Wendy Blunt, and Amber Miller.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All those, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. The Industrial Development Board, uh, we have, we had two member terms expire. We had one vacancy. We would like to go ahead and make all three of those three-year terms. Uh, so that would be Keith Rayburn, Jimmy Mize, and Wes McKnight. And I believe just for a bookkeeping sake, Keith Rayburn is filling an, the unexpired term. Thank you.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. The Main Street Advisory Board, these are, uh, five new members, each having three-year terms. Carly Allen, Trenton Birdwell, Melody Divin, Ryan Russell, and Michael Malott.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Pine Grove Cemetery Board, we have two members, uh, each of those are two-year terms. We have Burghert Patton.
Burghart.
Burghart Patton, thank you, and Perky Beisel.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Uh, and then we have a Planning and Zoning Commission and we have a, uh, member that resigned and we are going to go ahead and make that a two-year term appointment. And we had quite a few people apply for this, but we, uh, would like to nominate Nancy Smith Day for this position.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Okay. Agenda item number ten. Agenda item number ten is, uh, appointment for the Naming Committee. And traditionally, uh, Counsel does not, uh, interview for this committee. The Naming Committee makes a recommendation themselves and they have nominated Otis Sadler. Uh, so if there is any discussion, you all see his application. Uh, so if there's, uh, any discussion, we can have that. If not, uh, Chair would entertain a motion to, or I can go ahead and make the motion to approve Otis Sadler to the Naming Committee. Need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Uh, so again, congratulations to those people and, and thank you so much for wanting to serve our city. Are we having a executive session tonight? No executive session. Thank you all for attending. This concludes our meeting.